Here.
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 You.
Here.
First item on the agenda this evening is a presentation of the Highway 141 corridor study.
By way of brief introduction, we have been working with the City of Grimes, Polk County, Iowa DOT over the last number of months on a long-term corridor study of the Highway 141 corridor between Highway 44 and Highway 415 or Sayleville Drive. Mark Parington will be with us here tonight to give a brief overview of that, of that study. So I'm going to turn it over to Mark.
Evening, Mayor, Council members. Mark Parington, Snyder and Associates, Ankeny, Iowa. Like to give you just a really quick summary of where we're at with the study and try to answer any questions for you if I can after that.
Cindy? The screen in front of us is not on, is?
Getting the screen. To remind, to remind all of you real quick, you know, the, the goal of this was this partnership effort to try to analyze the corridor from the 44 interchange out on the west side of Johnston, Grimes, up to the Iowa 415 interchange, you know, roadway leading to the Mylone Bridge. So that's Sunshine Ridge corridor. Go ahead. The main thing we were trying to do with this was look at traffic growth over time, crash history, safety is always a very important part of what we're trying to do. And above all else, with the land use plans, Grimes has brought together their land use plan in 2018, updated that, and of course Johnson just completed the Thrive 2040. So that was a key part of everything we were trying to do. Again, reminding that with this map, this is a, a map put together from multiple comprehensive plans, but essentially looking at all that area out there and really focus on the area in there, you, you see the, the two little 141 symbols there perhaps, looking between those of all that potential land that's, potential redevelopment with the golf course area and the land in there as well as vacant land to the west of 141. So that was a key as we kind of zoom in on the corridor, but yet knowing there's just a lot of other opportunities still for the whole area and everything in Dallas, Polk County, and the other communities connecting too. These are some volumes out there in the corridor, just to give you some context. 2019, you see the, the black numbers across the top, that's, that's average daily traffic out there going through the corridor. So you have traffic in this kind of 23,000 range going through the corridor from one to the other. When you look below that, the blue numbers, you see those are the Des Moines area MPO of land use and demand goes into, to the model that they have there. And that's what it's forecasting out for about 30 years from now in the year 2050. So you see about a 50% growth and a, and a lot of it went upwards at 33, 35,000. But what do you see in the red numbers are what we came to, which was numbers could be growing significantly based on all of this comprehensive land use plan potential. We don't really put a year on that because it's when does all the land fill in, or does it ever completely fill in? But we wanted to put those values out there so that everybody could see those and realize what kind of potential the corridor actually has for traffic demand in it. It isn't just the, the land use adjacent to it as well that contributes to that. Still factoring in a lot of other growth that could occur in the area, you know, and all the other communities' growth and everything in the region. So again, there's a great potential for the corridor to, you know, continue to grow rapidly.
Mark, can you just, I'm sorry to interrupt, but
No, go ahead.
Can you put those numbers in sort of perspective? I mean, so when you look at 33,000, 35,000, what's another kind of similar road equivalent to that in the Des Moines metro?
Well, just further south. I mean, just take 141 on down further south. When you get down around, when you get right down near the I-3580 corner, I believe there's even in that stretch, even 40,000 in there. So I mean, if that gives you a context of how much traffic now, imagine just kind of pushing that northward. So that would be a close example. Another would be Hickman Road, you know, out west of the interstate, you start to get definitely have volumes in there, 1,000 and above.
I'm sorry, what?
There's definitely 30,000 and above out in that corridor.
Thank you.
Crashes, this, this small figure, this was 15, 2015 through 2019. But again, the, the dots in the quarter just represent where a lot of the crash activity is occurring. And of course, you see the clusters basically focused around the intersections. That's where we have the greatest amount of activity going on. I don't think that surprises anyone. But again, it's still a, it's of great importance to us when we evaluate the quarter and try to understand the type of safety improvements we should make. Go ahead. So I mean, really what we came out, these are some of the general findings in the initial part. On the safety side of things, fatalities, there've been a couple over the years, and unfortunately, I'm, I'm sure you had heard about them, just in the past couple of weeks, there were, there were two more fatalities out there in the corridor. So it's safety is paramount in the mind of everybody involved in this, of what we're trying to do. Make sure everything works, there's the demand to expand and grow, but yet we need to try to do that as safely as possible. So you've also, through your comprehensive plans, you know, identified the parallel corridors to it with 141. So that's a great opportunity for us. And I think the biggest thing, again, I'll emphasize, is that the corridor just has not reached the potential that it has. And that's why we're trying to get out in front of this. So all the recommendations for it, I'm going to bounce through these. Essentially, we've got a lot of different locations all through it that we came up with, but the bottom there, you'll notice, bottom line, maintaining some right in, right outs that are out there, there's two or three intersections that we could potentially close, but those will have access through other locations, kind of consolidation, if you will. Now, we'll talk about the adjacent roadway needs and even the potential for a new grade separated interchange further at the north end. Few of these aren't specifically in the Johnston city limits, but they certainly have context to what we're talking about. What you have in front of you right now is the area, Menards is there to the left side of the screen, the very backside of it. Up there's Casey's and Quick Star that's being pointed to, so north's going off to the right. Essentially, you see the roadway development on the east side of it. Why this is important in relation to City of Johnson is on the north end of that corridor, Destination Drive is, as Grimes tries to bring it through, would connect through and connect to Northwest 78th Avenue. So again, any development that would occur on 78th, you know, further land development there to the north and back to the east, you know, would feed to this area. And we want to make the maximum use out of the Beaver Brook signal that is out there on 141. Go ahead. So now zooming in a little more, short term, what you're looking at is Northeast 18th slash Northwest 78th, just north of that signal. Short term, if we continue to have some safety, and really the big issue is severity. If people are getting hurt out there, there will need to be measures taken to look at, you know, do you take the crossover away and just they take away the ability for people to try to go across, turn left in front of high-speed traffic, things of that nature. So that's a short term. You also see in that light blue gray, long-term right turn lane there. And what we talk about those, I'm going to say those over and over again, we call them positive offset, where you shift the right turn lane over, give people the ability, if you're sitting on the side road, to see around the traffic coming at you and make better choices. Go ahead. A little more longer term for 78th is the idea that if indeed we get the, and it'll be more a question of when, we get the connections made with Destination Drive and through Beaver Brook up from Menards coming on up, is that you would close this intersection up. So again, we're putting the emphasis on Beaver Brook. We've already got a signal there for most of it. It would be adding to the signal on the east side. And so flow out of this west area of Johnston over there, you know, would come back this direction, work towards Destination and up to Beaver Brook to get out onto 141. So 78th would really become a cul-de-sac there as it gets near 141. I just wanted to mention, there's a few driveways along there. As you start to go now from north of Northwest 78th, you know, down, you drop down through the bridges that go over Little Beaver Creek. There's a few residences along there. We're not seeing the conflict and the problem with those. So as long as those stay how they are, you know, just maybe one residence for all the acreage or a couple, those will probably stay as they are. And just the DOT will look to do some things with kind of improving paved shoulders, so there's more of a deceleration. Not quite an official turn lane, but again, give people the ability to get out of the way, if you will, as they're trying to turn in and out. So now we're moving up over, we've kind of crest over the, the next hill there at, at Timberbrook up on top for that development out there. And again, on the short term, you know, positive offset right turn lane for traffic approaching Timberbrook who's going southbound. Again, it just improves visibility and safety for people on Timberbrook trying to enter out onto the, out onto the road. Go ahead. Timber Ridge, similar thing in the short term, you know, we'd look at one of these positive offset right turn lanes, again, improving that visibility. But there will be some additional considerations for Timber Ridge as we talk about the other options. Go ahead. So when we look at Towner, the corner of the golf course, the intersection there, through some prior studies of 141, 415, a few years ago up to the north, there was already an identification with Towner on the west side of possible closure. Probably the biggest issue associated with it is, as you go to the top of the screen there, almost where the number nine is, you get up there, the Beaver Creek is eroding into it. And so the county, there's great difficulties with maintaining the road and keeping it there without some significant efforts to, to improve things. So that, that's kind of out there. But as far as the other side with the residences, what we talk about short term, there would be some potential, another one of these positive offset right turn lanes, but also doing some things within the right of way we have out there to perhaps shift the intersection a little bit southward, that again, would improve some operations for people traveling south on 141, increase the left turn lanes, very short coming across the bridges, improve their ability to get into a turn lane, slow down, and again, improve some sight distance as people sit on Towner and, you know, maybe looking back through the bridges, if you will. This is a short-term improvement. You can go ahead. This is another option that we had out there as a possibility. Again, a lot of these things, I failed to mention this at the beginning, there's so many of these things that are if development then. So a lot of these are, there, there are some short-term things that DOT can maybe do with maintenance work, but a lot of these will occur if there's redevelopment, greater traffic pressure, that's when you really need to think about these things. This is another example of Towner, of shifting it further south. Again, part of this relates to, there's been some discussion about that corner of the golf course, some potential forceful development. You wouldn't just push the road right through there with the golf course as it is. This would be more a function of if something would occur with redevelopment in that corner, and there would be an opportunity to make this safer and better for everybody. And there could be more traffic pressure that would occur with development of that corner. So that possibility. Those were some short-term things I went through real quick in that area. Now I'm going to kind of talk about the bigger picture out in that whole area. What you'll notice here is, you know, you see in these pink lines, kind of some new roadways. If you could slide that down just a little bit, there, there you go. 121st being up there on the top of the page, if you will, over on the Grimes side. And the pink roadway you see aligning through is really an extension of 100th as it comes north, when we get to the Camp Dodge property, maneuvering it along the south edge of the property, and then continuing up through the golf course, eventually taking across Beaver Creek and connect 110th Court on the right side of the image there. The other talk is of a east-west, call it a major collector, minor arterial type street that would then run between 121st, over, across, under 141, and over to this 100th, 110th connector. That would be the way to serve. Again, you have to look at that, and right now you're seeing it on top of a golf course aerial, but you've got to envision that as that land changing completely with totally different development. That's what would cause that type of consideration. So what you're seeing in the middle there, right at 141, yep, is the, is an interchange type facility is what we're looking at. Generally, given the lay of the land, it's somewhat conducive to taking the local road, the new local east-west road under, if you will, because it's a lot lower if you go out there and look at it. And 141 would be at somewhat like where it is, or we'd actually, you know, raise it a little bit as it comes through there to create bridges so that this local road would go under it. And the idea would be to create a grade separated intersection at the location, because we just believe this is going to be the safest and most efficient way to, to handle traffic out there. You go ahead, there's a zoomed-in version. This shows you a little more detail of it. Again, you can see the ramps from kind of left to right on the screen there. They extend out to the south, they go just up past Timber Ridge, and then to the north, they go just up across Beaver Creek, like any ramps, you know, there's room for acceleration. We're also dealing with some grade there as you go up, up the hill when you're going southbound. But the idea we've, we've put out there is a concept is for what we call a tight urban diamond, which is a very compressed interchange. So don't, don't think of it like you would something out here along I-3580 with a much bigger footprint. This is the idea to be a much more compressed, because again, we're not dealing with the interstate corridor, we're just dealing with the Highway 141 corridor. Also, the goal behind that is to try to limit the right-of-way impacts on adjacent developable ground next to it. So again, the idea being, at this point, generally, local road under 141 would, would, the bridges would be put in there that would go over it. That's how you would set it up, in kind of a diamond configuration. The last item to remind you of, this, this area was a little more part of the prior study that occurred in 18, but the DOT asked, we mentioned this to you, is that change the directionality of things here. But there's Beaver Creek, you can see kind of on the bottom of the screen, right there in the middle, and Towner. But the idea of these other little points in there limited to right in, right out, or there's, there's just kind of a median opening, it's nothing's really connected, it would close by the interchange. But what you see in that left rectangular image that's zoomed in, is the interchange, the potential for that connectivity over to 121st as well. Would have to go across Beaver Creek, but this was discussed as a part of safety again, where you see in the upper left of that, you see 121st, you see those two little circles, those are like cul-de-sacs in a sense, that being severed, again, because of the dangerous operation at the intersection and the safety problems there. This would give access through that location. It would also serve, there's a subdivision out there that was built around that curve. And the other thing this presents an opportunity for is, there was discussion about bicycle trail connectivity out in the area. And so this provides an opportunity to of a trail connection more, it's how to get across 141 back and forth. And that's what this provides as well, a corridor to put a bike trail in that then would be right next to the interchange to go across 141. Eventually, that could work with other connectivity on up all the way to Beaver, or, you know, eventually up in northern parts to, up towards Gester Park. So there's a lot going on in there. Go ahead. In the entire corridor, I think the other thing that goes without saying is that we recognize at some point, six total lanes will be likely, you know, just like the widening of lanes five and six not that long ago, from down from the I-3580 corner, you know, on up to 44, will pretty much be faced with the similar thing. The next natural is from 44 right on up to 415. So it's probably not that far away, you know, it's just as warranted. Monitoring speed limits through there. As you know, the corridor is designed, it's designed four lane, I think it was about 1976 when it was constructed. And, you know, it's designed wide open, it, it's separated quite a bit. So it has a design speed, certainly that's up there higher. The idea being it's at 55, 65, perhaps the opportunity to maybe look at is just a 55 mile per hour corridor, but you get in that reality of what people are kind of willing to drive and comfortable to drive, given the nature of the corridor, limited access and kind of wide open versus what we post out there as a speed limit. And then enforcement is a reality to that as well. Safety goes without saying, monitoring that. Go ahead. So where we're at, these draft recommendations were made, an initial draft report that came out in July. There were a couple of public meetings, we had one early on in May, several of you were able to attend that. Then we had another one in August where we presented, you know, these concept recommendations. We're kind of been collecting some public comments as we go, that's pretty much slowed down, we haven't gotten any more. And we've been working on that relocated Towner, that new interchange, if you will. We've been working on concepts related to that with the adjacent landowners and talking about development ideas and, you know, how to tweak it. And again, right now, we're in such an early planning stage of where it would be plus or minus a few hundred feet. But the DOT themselves also had an internal project review meeting where they met with their project management team on October 1st. And, you know, again, just discuss the ideas with the corridor, what's going on with it, and, and what they want to continue to try to maintain for mobility and, and safety and performance. Go ahead. So, these, what's, what's left, the final steps, other than just, you know, wrapping up the, the planning study and the report. The DOT wants to come back based on the recommendations with an access control agreement to work with the agencies, with Johnston, with Grimes, and with Polk County, you know, to help define these things. In the past, they haven't had those, and they've found those work quite well, to help your folks with development and working with developers and understanding, here's what we're going to try to do with the corridor for everybody's benefit. Continue to work with the landowners, developers, talk about this relocated Towner access. And then recognizing too, there could be phasing to some of these things. You know, you might not just get one, one location all at once, you might get one side of it, kind of like Beaver Brook to the south, where one side of it happened at first, but ultimately it's going to have another side. And then the department also talked about transportation, that some of those things like right turn lanes and things, still believe the need there, it isn't going to be replaced by something greater that we talked about in the long term, that they would do some of those right turn lanes and things as they rehabilitate the corridor with a, with a resurfacing project to improve it. So some of those things may happen just as a function of the department's work. So a lot went through there. Happy to try to answer any questions, or if Dave can too, and see, see what we can fill you in on. That's where we're at.
Thank you, Mark. Does the council have any questions for Mark?
Mark, specifically when you talk about that relocated Towner Drive interchange in that tight diamond configuration, as it's depicted right now on that slide, would, would 141 be able to accommodate six lanes?
Yeah, there's probably some width in there, the, the median's wider. It all depends on how they'd finally do it and, and put it together. But that would be one of the points that we try to try to make sure that when we finalize some concepts that, yeah, you can get lanes five and six through there. I know that'd be in the DOT's mind. Yep.
Mayor, I have a question. Okay. So again, at this same intersection, there has been discussion about development on the west side of the road, that that is something that the developer's looking and getting, moving quite quickly. But on the east side of the road, it's still a golf course. So we were told the other day that possibly this could be a one, you know, we could build out to the west, but we wouldn't have to make that connection on the east side until needed. Is that possible, phased?
Yeah, we've been talking about that. We, we think it's a reality of how things might occur.
Okay.
You know, so do you have to have it all at once? No, not necessarily. And that's some of the things we, the DOT has reached out to us about. Maybe we need to take a next step forward and kind of talk about phasing something. So that again, you get the long-term improvement you need, try to spend the infrastructure dollars in the best way possible, without throwing something away over time, if you will. Yep.
And I really do appreciate your thoughts about getting bicycles across 141. And I would recommend that every time we do a build, we provide for pedestrian or bicycle at some point.
And I, I focused on this interchange there at 415, but certainly if you had an interchange there, a grade separated, it relocated Towner, other places, yeah, there's other opportunities. Because really, people crossing at grade with 141 is just not a good mix of pedestrians, bicyclists, and vehicles. So anything we can do to go over, under, is going to be a good opportunity.
So Mark, there on, I'm looking at slide 17, this Timber Book, Timberbrook Lane that goes there, and then kind of, it, it's on, lined up there. Would those both be right in, right out only, both the north side and the, I mean, the, the west side and the east side?
Right. Timberbrook, which is up at the top of the hills, right there below the 141, perfect, you're pointing at it. At those, we've talked about those being able to probably be right in, right out. And then Timber Ridge, which is down the hill, going into the area, that would probably get, if an interchange with ramps were built, that might have to close because of, you know, it just isn't going to work with the ramps.
Right. So the, and the reason I, I know I've had some people who live in that neighborhood contact, you know, they used to live in Johnston. I think they were sort of concerned about that, how this gets redeveloped. I think they would like this, the approach you've got here, because it's, because it's, there's not a way to cut through their neighborhood.
Yeah. And I would comment, if you could, there you go. I, I don't have more map there to the west, but again, when you look at land to the west and additional areas and getting traffic over here, one of the ideas behind this relocated road is to create more of, as I said, a major collector, minor arterial type street that, you know, it's more traffic than just what's in that development. And the other thing too, is the people in that Timber, Timberbrook development, you know, you don't want to take the residential street and have that turning into more and more demand coming through there, because that certainly wasn't ever the intended purpose.
Right.
So, yeah, sometimes the closure and things can actually be beneficial long-term if we put together the rest of the roadway network.
And what's your, you mentioned you had two public meetings, are those kind of done at this point? Or how, at what point do you envision sort of taking this document back to the public, or how will that process work?
I guess we, we presented the concepts. Not much has changed really from the last meeting we had in August, just some tweaks to the positioning of that, of that interchange, which again, that can still move a few hundred feet once you get into real design. So I don't think we've changed much more. So I don't know that there was any intent to have any further public dialogue on it at this point, but, you know, I'd yield to Jim or Dave if they have any other thoughts on that.
All right, thanks.
Mayor, one more, slide 19, I just wanted to clarify, there are the, on the left-hand sides, that kind of the mark, you had indicated that those gray circles would in essence indicate that those are now dead ends, right? You would close off those streets at those points?
Yeah. The, the DOT is actually working on a project now. It came out of the 2018 study that some of the movements at 121st are being removed. I believe the north side is going to be removed, and they're still going to have some right in, right out, and maybe one left movement as an interim until other connectivity can be created. But yeah, that's being worked on as a safety project. And it also relates to the, the new corridor of 110th. You see it there in the middle of the screen where you're zoomed out more. That alignment isn't precisely right over a little farther. It's, but that is kind of that new roadway that would lead to that area. Again, we're trying to maximize the utilization of the 415 interchange, you know, use that as the interchange to then feed to the, the next street over, to then let that street feed everybody up into the area.
That 110th is also proposed then to continue southward to Towner?
Yeah, it, it exists as a roadway today down to, I think it's to Row. It exists. And then, yeah, there's the other drawing. And then the idea would be, we'd create the connectivity on down across Beaver Creek, and if the golf course would redevelop through there. So that, you know, we end up with a, that lesser level parallel, you know, street to serve the land use and for the shorter trips versus going out onto 141.
So Mark, on that, on that same page 19, or slide 19, you have the west connector, and there's a, looks like there's a bridge there.
Yeah.
So who, who, who pays for that? I, I think we're now outside the city limits of Johnston, right?
Yeah, that, those details, I know it's
Anytime you've got a bridge, I get a little, I mean, because that's, that's a, becomes a
Well, and I think, careful here promising anything on behalf of the DOT, but I think the, the key with that is, it's kind of like the roadway with 110th course on the east side to the north of 415, that the DOT is looking best in that because it helps protect the safety at 121st. So I think if more things would occur with this interchange and this longer-term vision, you know, there'd be elements there where they'd modify that interchange. And, you know, there's possibility, I'm not sure how things would work out in actual partnering, whether the county, the DOT, everyone would be involved, whether it strictly be the DOT, but
I'm, when you say everybody, as long as everybody is the county and DOT and not Johnston and Grimes.
Yeah.
Granger maybe probably would be, you're getting close enough to Granger there too, that they would have to kick in.
Mark, back on Towner Drive, you said that the concept really hasn't changed since August. The, the ultimate goal here is to probably put a tight, a diamond interchange there. But I also heard you say that there's been more discussion around maybe a phasing approach, taking into consideration that, you know, development is going to occur at different times, depending on, you know, the properties, the traffic volume will increase commensurate with, with that. with, with that economic growth. Is the more phased approach going to be part of the report as well?
Well, I think as we have further discussions on it, it's kind of bringing everybody together. I know that, I know that Dave and I were talking and trying to get with Tony Gustafson at the DOT District to talk about those exact things.
Good.
Because everything is such a, you know, concept sketches, just like we're sketching ideas for the roadway, you know, I don't know that we have any hard and fast, we have development concepts, but somebody isn't ready to push dirt around and start, you know, building homes tomorrow or something like that, so-
Well, just about.
We're all, okay, but we're all trying to put things together to get a plan approach, because again, part of it is, we want to make sure we do the right things out of the chute, again, for everybody's investment.
And we agree with that completely.
And the phasing, I think, could be key to this of, can you build kind of a partial approach, knowing that, well, you build a half, you build a half, and in the end, everybody-
And we don't want throwaway, we want to make sure that it's, you know, incremental in the right direction, so we can just build off of what's already, already there. But, yeah, we don't, you know, we, again, I think we all believe that this is probably the ultimate goal, for safety reasons and efficiency and everything else of the road. But we don't want, you know, this is probably 10 years out.
Yeah.
Could be, yeah. And in the meantime, we don't want to stall economic development in that area, so.
No, that's the difficulty we always have with quarters like this and the intersections, it's always a challenge, kind of, the development coming first, then the reaction to it of, oh, what do we need to build? And I think that's why this effort has been really good, because we're trying to get out in front of some of these pieces and say, safety and performance out there, what, what do we need to plan for, at least, so that we create the right open area of land so we can do it.
Very good. Any other questions for Mark? Thank you, Mark, appreciate the update. The next item on the agenda is to discuss zoning and subdivision regulation code, provisions to zoning district dimensional standards.
Good evening, as council is aware, we've been continuing, you can go to page four, Cindy, we've been continuing to work on the update of our zoning code, and the county, the commission last Monday night spent, well, I don't know, almost two hours probably discussing. Thanks to the mayor for attending and, and listening, they've really, really rolled up their sleeves and working hard on this, and so I want to make sure you're aware of the discussions they're having, and so I'm not going to go through this whole presentation, and I want to just touch on a few highlights, and real, real question I'm asking tonight is if you hear or see something in the information you have concerns about or, or questions about, raise those flags now so we can, we can keep working on that. And so the, the bulk of the work that's been going on since the last update has really been looking at dimensional standards, so setbacks, minimum lot sizes, and those types of, those types of things. And one of the things I wanted to highlight that's, that's new and different, and it shows up here on the, on the sketch, that we've defined or planning to define with this change is what we're calling the side corner yard setback. So, traditionally, a corner lot on, a lot that's on the corner of two streets has two front yards, and we get a lot of variance requests for various things, fences and other things, because people use one of those side yards really as, or one of those front yards really as a side yard, you know, their house spaces one street, and their backyard and side yard really is an opposite side. And so, we're defining that as the side corner yard setback, and you'll see as we go through this, that allows us to look at setbacks, that allows us to look at how we handle fences and those kind of things, because we're specifically calling out that front, that, that second front yard, and the front yard would be then where your front door is facing, and that would, would, you know, we'd allow that flexibility in the code. You can slide ahead to seven, Cindy. It's one of the things, you know, we have, we have densities in our, in our comp plan that are sort of our, our goal densities. What we did here, in what we would do going forward, is really tie zoning districts to where, you know, R1-100, R175, really tie the suburban residential, R1-160, R2 are, you know, more suburban mixed residential, and so we're just highlighting that, that tie to the, back to the comp plan, comp plan here. That then leads into page 10, I believe, where we look at our lot dimensions for our residential districts, and what's on this screen is R160, R175, and R1-100. What's shown in black is basically we're proposing to, to not have any in the, the left is our current, the right is our proposed, our current proposed, everything shown in black is insistent are the same as what it is today, what's shown in red would be changes. One of the things that we've, what we've tried to do, and we talked about during the last update, was really define housing types differently, so a duplex would be two units on one lot, a twin home would be two units on two lots, so they'd still be attached, but they'd have separate ownership. And so that allows us to create different bulk regulations for those uses, and that, we don't have that in our current code, and so you'll see, for example, a two-unit duplex, that's horizontal, meaning side by side versus vertical, whether one on the main level, one on the second level. We're suggesting minimum lot width of 120 feet, you go to the one below that, a twin home where it'd be on two lots, it's basically the same, 120 for two, but each one would be 60, and the same there for the, the minimum square footage. So we're trying to, in this case, we're just trying to, to build that table out a little bit more, because we're defining uses differently. If you can slide to the next. Similar for R2, the one thing that we are trying to do here is have a graduation in districts, and so our current R2 single family have the same bulk regulations as R160, so we've, we've, it goes a little bit smaller here in the R2 to have a graduation, so you'd have a little bit smaller lot in R2, and you'd gradually get larger as you work up through the residential, residential districts. And again, similar concept through the art, the two-unit type uses, that there'd be setbacks and, and widths there.
Dave, what, what's the difference between R160 and R2?
It's really how many, what uses are allowed, so R160 would only allow a single-family house, a duplex or a twin home. When you get into R2, you can also do a three or four unit type of a product, a small townhouse, which I believe is four units or less attached.
All, all four attached?
All four attached, right. So, the, the idea is as we, as you get, as you move into the more denser districts, and you would be able to have more housing types, that doesn't mean that there wouldn't be some that overlap, so a single-family would be allowed in R2 and in R160, for example, just with slightly different standards. Same with the, the twin, the twin homes and the, and the, and the duplexes, those minimum lot widths are slightly smaller in R2 than they are in R160, for example. Page 12 there, we get into the R3, one of the things that's our, our current, when you get into R3 and R4, which is our traditional townhome, and is our 3, our 4 is traditional apartment district, most of the bulk regulations are set up for the entire site, and then we have building separations and those types of things. We will still have that, what we're trying to do is establish, if, if they're actually platted lots underneath each townhome unit, what are the, what are the bulk densities? And that's what you're seeing in the red on the right, so that's why you're seeing such a broad change. The 200 minimum lot width and the 80,000 square foot in our current R3 is what the entire development would have a minimum of, and then you'd have little lots within side, inside of that. Rita noted it, Rita with HKGI in her memo that was attached, noted that the one thing that this does, this table doesn't account for yet is many times a developer will postage stamp a lot around the foundation of a unit, and everything else is an outlaw. So we'll account for that in the details of the, of this. What this is showing right now is each unit, how wide each unit would need to be, or the lot underneath it would need to be, and how big that's, that lot would need to be. And using those values, then we can, we can get down to what, if it's an outlaw, and what those sort of perimeter minimums would need to be in those types of things. So, that's why you're seeing such all red there, it's not as much of a change in what we're kind of used to seeing, it's just the manner in which we would regulate it. If you go to page 13, Cindy, that's pretty much the same thing for R4. The one thing I would note, particularly as it relates to minimum lot area, you know, we have minimum lot areas today, and the assumption is that you can, you could go build whatever is allowed in that district if you meet the minimum lot square footage, and that's not necessarily the case. And so, nothing in these minimums would prevent the need for meeting parking requirements and open space requirements, landscaping requirements, all those things, you have to add all that together, and that may mean that the minimum lot has to be bigger than what our actual codified minimum is. And so that's a clarification we'd like to make, just because, you know, you look at that and say, oh, we're, we're going to, proposing 1,000 square feet per unit in a, in a townhome, or, excuse me, an apartment dwelling instead of 80,000 square foot total. That doesn't mean we wouldn't have a larger lot there to support that, it just means that they still have to meet all those other requirements, we like to make sure that that's pointed out and that's clear.
So the 80,000 requirements, those, those will no longer exist?
Those would no longer exist, but we'd still have requirements for the whole site. And what we've, what we've found in it, you know, ownership, financing, things change over time, what we've found is, pretty much, when you're, when a developer's developing an apartment building, for an example, they want separate ownership on each building for financing purposes and not the entire complex. So, you know, before, maybe the whole complex was built under one lot, now they want individual ownership. And so, when you have the 80,000 square feet, that may complicate that, and if you look at Bricktown, the Polk County assessors site, you'll see these really goofy lot lines. They met all those requirements, but they did it by drawing lot lines through parking lots and open space and everything else, and, and, you know, it'd be much simpler to have a more defined, and you still make sure all that stuff is met on a common, common outlaw or whatever, so. We're trying to make sure we're setting ourselves up that we don't have every development proposing a, a PUD based on financing and market conditions. You can, you can bounce down to 15, Cindy, thank you. So then we get into setbacks, for what's shown here is R160, R175, and R1-100, again, really not much change. The one thing that's, that we are suggesting, when you look at how our districts are set up today, rear yards generally match front yard setbacks, except in R160, and so we're proposing a five-yard reduction in the R1-160 rear yard setback. And then you'll see that proposed side corner lot, that's that second front yard that I talked about, where we are suggesting a reduced ability to reduce that, that setback on the one side of a front yard, and if you go to Green Meadows North or Green Meadows West, they're both set up that way, they were done by PUD, basically with a 25% reduction to that, to one front yard, and that's what's reflected here. You can bounce to the next page, thank you. This gets into R2, again, very minimal changes, the, the rear yard to reflect the front yard, and then showing that, showing that proposed side corner yard again. Similar to R4, minimum, showing minimums, front and rear of 20, a little bit more flexibility there, and again, showing that side corner yard. Any questions on, on setbacks? I'm going to then skip ahead, there's a bunch of information on accessory dwelling units and cottage homes, commission asked for more information on that, and so I will, we'll, we'll follow back up on that at a, at a future meeting, go to page 31. We also looked at non-residential districts, and so what's shown here is our, our C1 through M districts. We talked the last time about changing our PC, or combining our PC and our CO, we're now calling that E1, employment, and we talked about making changes to our IC, we're now calling that E2, so a graduated difference between sort of office employment, light warehousing type of, we'd have a separation there between E1 and E2. A couple, the, the PC in particular had a lot larger lot requirement and a lot wider width, what we're suggesting here is pretty much every commercial district would have a minimum lot width of 100 feet, 20,000 square feet, and again, not every use would be able to develop on a lot that size, they may need a, may require a larger lot. Bounce ahead to the next slide, actually two slides, page 33, where we look at setbacks, not a lot of changes. As far as setbacks go, the, the E1 and E2 are just because we're combining districts there. One of the things that we had in our M district that we've carried forward in our C2, C3, E2 districts, is that if there's a side yard abutting in a residential district, that would have an automatic 30-foot setback, and so that would, that would actually be an increase from our current, just reflecting that those uses should have a greater setback from residential districts. Again, we have the corner side yard setback listed for all of those. The other thing that would also be a little bit more restrictive is our, our current heights in our districts is pretty much 50 in all districts, and some districts are more apt to be next to a residential district, for example, and so what we thought was more appropriate is a transition of, when you start at C1 at 35 foot in height or three stories, and then work your way up as the uses intensify. And if you want to go to the next slide, Cindy, the other thing we're suggesting is that anything over three stories would have a required setback above that third story, so, and you can see in the graphic on the right there, those buildings, if they get taller on that third story, would have to setback, so you're not looking at that straight vertical wall for, for buildings that would be taller, that would be a, a new change.
So that would start on the third story, the first two?
Currently is drafted at the third, this actually shows it, after, our, the way it's currently drafted is after the third, this graphic shows it after the second.
After the second, okay.
Yep, so that's certainly up for discussion if there's a, we do have a little bit of that right now, I think our C2 district, we've talked about if, for every setback, greater your setback from the minimum, you can add a foot in height, so there's some, there's some flexibility there, this gets, just takes it a little bit, little bit further. The next two slides really look at mixed use, or, or two proposed mixed use districts. I will note that the, what's proposed there really reflect the same uses in R3 and R4, so pretty much the same bulk requirements are carried forward. If you want to bounce to page 38, Cindy, the one thing we are suggesting in our mixed use, remember our mixed use per our comp plan are supposed to be walkable urban, you know, pedestrian-friendly environments, and so we are suggesting that buildings would have to be pushed closer to the street, and as drafted, 50% of that building would need to basically be within a range of, of, between, find it off the top of my head, but be within a range of the front setback, so they, essentially what this would do is push the parking lot to the rear or to one side, and again, that would get the building closer, closer to the street, not unlike what we've done in the town center here. And so that would be a new change, but only in those mixed use, two mixed use districts. I'm going to bounce all the way ahead to page 41 and summarize it here. Our next step, and I noted this in the staff report in the packet as well, is to really dive into development standards, where we look at open space buffer, landscaping, parking, stormwater, all those fun types of things, and we really, while they all stand on their own, we really need to look at them together, because one affects the other, and they all kind of work, and they all compete for the, sort of the same space on a lot. And so what we've suggested and what we had kind of planned as we went into the process was to, to create a committee that could really dive into this, and we know there's a lot of interest from, from the landscaping perspective and the tree board, and the commission have had previous conversations, and so what we've suggested is creating a committee that would be made up of planning and zoning commission, tree board members, mayor and members of the city council, that could really dive in to these issues, and sort of report out to both the commission and to the council. Our next joint meeting of the council and the commission is scheduled for January 24th, and so I, we're, we've got a schedule laid out that would allow this committee to meet twice before that, first week of January, the third week of January, I believe, around January 18th, and then that would allow us to report back to the joint meeting on the 24th, and there would probably be a follow-up meeting in early February. So, I've got invitations out to the tree board and the commission for volunteers on that, I, you don't have to tell me tonight, but I love their interest here, I respected the, Rhonda has interest. I'd love to have two members of the council and if the mayor is interested and available as well. Our suggestion is that would be like a 3:30 in the afternoon, we do it by Zoom, just because we're going to have a lot of folks involved, and it'd just be easier to get everyone together. And like I said, we're, we're going to try to commit to the only three meetings, obviously if we need to go more, we'll go more, but HKGI's been doing a really good job of keeping things moving along and, and making sure everyone's prepared when they come to the meeting, so, that's what we're looking at, if anyone else would like to volunteer, I would encourage that. Where we go from here, P&amp;Z is meeting the, we're taking December off from any kind of significant discussion at their meetings, but they are having, this is on their agenda, the second meeting of every month, so end of January, end of February, end of March, end of April, end of May. We are planning another joint meeting with the council and the commission on May 23rd, which is the fourth Monday of a five Monday month, just like January, and I- And I suspect we may want to do a joint meeting, the P&amp;Z's last meeting in March. And I, these are all on the agenda. I'll get invitations out to everyone, just so you have them on your calendar.
Say March?
March, March, March 28th. So that would be the commission's normal night to meet. But there's a long time between January and May, and there's going to be a lot of work happening. And I, as we've laid out the schedule, it just seems like we need to have the, the two groups together for a, an opportunity somewhere in the middle, so.
I didn't hear if she said March or May.
March and May is what we're looking, January, March and May is kind of our current schedule. And that, you know, there will be hiccups and bumps and things might stretch out. But that really is the bulk of the heavy lifting of let's dive in, roll up our sleeves. And by that point, after May, we should have a really good handle of what the ordinances might look like. That's the goal. And then we go through the education and adoption, all that fun stuff. But that's the, that's where we're heading. I'm going to stop talking and ask if there's any questions or
Any other quick questions? Going to try and get through one more item on the agenda if we can.
Dave, the one thing that you didn't talk about tonight, but is, but I think is sort of bizarre is our C2 uses, our list of how you can, you know, see to, like, for instance, ballrooms. Who's going to build a ballroom? Is it, I mean, I mean, it's sort of like this, this list seems to me to be really dated.
We're working on that.
Okay. So is that something you guys are looking at? Okay, okay, okay. I'm not sure what's the best way to solve it.
What we always joke about internally is if, if you have a logical use that you come to ask us if it's allowed, we can't tell you because it's not listed. But if you have some obscure thing, it obviously, matter of fact, will be in there.
That list, it might be the most obscure list ever invented.
We're working on that.
Okay, great.
Yep. Not to change the intent, but just to make it a lot easier to interpret.
Okay.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Mayor, the, the discussion for item C, the presentation takes about 15 minutes. And then that doesn't include comments or questions from the council. So probably don't have time to get into that one this evening. May want to reschedule that for another time.
Okay. So we want to do D? We should be able to do D.
Apologize, that item is, is fairly critical to the police department's budget this year. And we just wanted to make sure we had enough plenty of time, so to talk about it. So in your board docs packet for this evening, good evening, I should have said, Mary Council. In your board packet, we have three PDF documents for you. The biggest one is the entire budget PDF. It's called the distributed PDF budget. And Cindy was very helpful to me last week and has bookmarked all the pages for you. So if you open up the document and click open the bookmarks, you'll see, she's opened it up on the screen here, that there's the bookmark for the various departments and then bookmarks for the various decision packages as we go through discussion next Tuesday, a week from tomorrow. Additionally, all the pages are numbered at the bottom. So when we start talking about something, you should be able to find the number at the bottom of the document as well. These are the line item budgets themselves, which hopefully it's our goal, of course, that you won't have to spend a lot of time going through those with us, to be honest with you. First of all, we won't have enough time to do that. But if something is glaring at you, we certainly would like to know that. But for the most part, what's in the line item budget has been approved union wage increases and then our normal operating expense, any new program, service, piece of equipment, anything like that is coming to you as a decision package that we've talked about. And then you've seen what those look like. There's the decision packages. I have summarized those in an Excel document. I guess I could have put that out there for you as well. However, what normally comes to you is the department director for that department has prioritized their decision packages as they present them to you. When we come back in our January council meeting to work on the budget, Jim will have prioritized those as well for you to consider. By that point, we will have received evaluations. I did talk to the assessor's office, or auditor's office, excuse me, last week. Just wondering when I maybe could be getting a preliminary number. And they have new software. And several people changed tip districts, and the bottom line is I'm not going to have it. I was hoping I'd have it by next Tuesday when I, we came to our work session. But they say it will be highly unlikely that I have a, my first look at the number. But as soon as I get it, obviously, I'll share that with you. Anyway, so those decision packages are for new, a new item, new service, new program, any new staff that they have requested. The finance council committee has met with the departments and to get preliminary reports on the decision packages. And the department directors took preliminary feedback and reaction. And you will notice finance committee that some of the decision packages that were presented to you during our committee meetings are not included in this final budget as presented to you tonight. So if you're wondering what happened, the department directors took into account our feedback that they were given during those meetings as well. So I think it's laid out pretty clearly for you. Hopefully, we'll be able to answer any questions you may have. The other documents that are in board docs for you. I always create what are called budget program summaries. Brian, you may be the only one, I can't remember if you and I've talked about this, but our budgets, as we prepare them for the state, have to be in program area. Public safety, public works, culture and recreation, community and economic development, we have to present them in a program area. So I prepare always a program summary. And what that summary is telling you is, is, is not gospel. You couldn't take this to the bank, but it's a pretty 10,000-foot level picture of what it looks like. For an example, there's public safety, ooh, sorry, Cindy. You'll see what their expenditures cost us. You'll see what kind of revenue we actually get for that department. And then you'll kind of see what amount of property tax dollars it takes to run that program area. It's not down to the penny because there's grants and things like that that come in. But that's the point of the program summaries that I do for you. You'll see if you would go to even community and economic development or even then the enterprise funds. You should not be getting having any amount necessary from property taxes to help support those particular areas. So there's summaries for all of the nine program areas required by the state. And then the other document that's included is the capital equipment plan. And the capital equipment plan is our depreciated equipment. And there's a five-year schedule included in here. We are moving this to our new software that we used for our CIP. We just haven't got that finalized yet. We just started that this fall. So you'll still, still see the same Excel spreadsheet of the items that are being replaced per fiscal year. That's the five-year, six-year summary of all departments. And then behind those summary sheets then is financial reconciliation for the general fund and road use tax fund, which is combined because we transfer money from the road use tax fund to the general fund to buy all street equipment and any other general fund. You'll see a reconciliation for the general fund and the water and sewer funds and how we accomplish our transfer and where those equipment costs are paid for. So that's all for the budget tonight. Originally on your budget calendar, we were setting the public hearing tonight for the CIP. However, the financial analysis was not quite finished for the CIP. So we are having, on the next council meeting, we will be setting the public hearing for the first meeting in January. So we're just back one week. Will still be done prior to the council meeting. Haven't received any feedback from any of you regarding any, any project questions that we had through all of our presentations. But that's where we're at with all of our budget work. I'm currently working on our first budget amendment, which will also be in January. So any questions? That was a lot. Sorry, talked pretty fast.
Questions for Teresa?
Just a note to the council, we are going to start at 7 o'clock on December 14th rather than 5:30 due to a scheduling conflict. So we will begin that meeting at 7 o'clock. So we've got a lot of work to do and probably two, two plus hours, I guess, so.
We're going to, if we don't, we're going to try to get departments squeezed in our work sessions and things like that as we get, as we move along. But if you see anything prior to the 14th or in between, please just fire off an email to me or call me, and I'll do my best to get an answer for you instead of waiting.
Thank you, Teresa.
Okay, thank you.
Jim, do we want to, we're going to reschedule the item C, the police K9 program. Do we want to do the parks department budget after our regular meeting?
We'll, we'll see how we're doing for time at the end of the meeting.
I would suggest waiting and doing it after. I mean, we have a lot of people here.
Oh, no, that's what I meant. If we do it tonight, we'll do it after.
Oh, okay, okay, okay. That was, okay.
Yeah. Okay. It is 7 o'clock, so we'll go, go ahead and adjourn the city council work session.